Call on Vice Mayor West to give us the prayer and then he will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Watch your bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, thank you so many gifts that you bestow upon us each and every day. We ask that you watch over us as you guide us to do your work, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with our men and women overseas fighting for our freedom. Without these brave men and women, we cannot practice our freedoms that we cherish today. Lord, we ask that you be with the needy, the ill, and the weak, Lord, as that we know that you are the ultimate provider and the ultimate healer. Lord, we also ask that you be with the leaders of our country, the leaders of our state, and the leaders of our city, Lord, so that we may do your work. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wes. All right, at this time, we will review our agenda and I will take a motion to accept or make any changes on our agenda.
Motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this point in time, we have our citizens' input. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. And now, we get to do some fun things. We get to swear in. I see Mr. Carter showed to the one and only sitting out there. Carter, are you ready to be sworn out?
Yes.
Come down front and we will swear you in. We appreciate your service on the zoning board of appeals. I'm gonna come down there and swear you in. You're swearing your allegiance to the city of Tifton for our land.
Of course.
You will pay taxes.
Of course.
All right. If you will, you'll just affirm at the end of this presentation, okay? I do silently swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the planning and zoning committee of this city and that I will support and defend the charter of the city of Tifton as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless providentially hindered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend to city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia. I shall also attend to schedule any special term granted by the city of Tifton. Would you please raise your hand in the眾票区? Congratulations. You're now a member of the planning and zoning board, which we appreciate very much. I just want to remind everybody that our boards do run through the volunteers of our citizens and we appreciate your time and your service. And we have other boards that we'll talk about at the end of the program today where we have positions that are available. We were also just swearing Ruby Williams. Do you know if she was coming this evening, Johnny? I know you had mentioned her. Okay. We can, okay, all right. At this point in time, we have a special presentation by Elliot Caldwell with Georgia Bikes. I'll turn the floor over to you, Elliot.
Thank you. Oh, I thought that was on. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor Commission. I appreciate it. And thanks to Jessica for setting this up as well. So again, my name's Elliot Caldwell with Georgia Bikes. We're a statewide bicycle advocacy organization based out of Savannah. I'm based out of Athens and my other coworker is based out of Atlanta. So we're kind of spread throughout the state. And I work particularly on passing, getting cities and counties to look at complete streets policies as a way to include, improve pedestrian bicycle safety throughout the state. So I'm just gonna do a little bit of, a little bit of presentation on complete streets and talk to all a little bit of that and answer a few questions if y'all have any.
And we can see your presentation on our screen, so that's what we have, we're not turning it down.
Great. So, we talked about what are complete streets. The complete streets policy are, complete streets are streets for everybody. They're designed and operated to enable safe access for all users. People of all ages and abilities are able to safely move across and through a community regardless of how they travel. So whether you're in a car, whether you're walking, whether you're biking, whether you've got a stroller, whether in a wheelchair, you can get into a community safely. A good way of thinking about it, there's a well-known sort of advocate, worldwide advocate for biking and walking that talks about eight eighty cities. Cities that can both accommodate eighty-year-olds and eighty-year-olds to get throughout the city. And that means, you know, your children, or your niece or nephew, or your parents or grandparents, that they can move through a city or an area with as much ease as your sort of standard and middle-aged able-bodied person can. So we talk about sort of ages and abilities across that spectrum. That tends to be what I try to get into people's minds. Think about your grandparents or your parents, think about your children, or your nieces or nephews, or younger relatives. Complete streets policies, their policies are, again, adopted by cities, counties, and states. They ensure that public right-of-way is planned, designed, constructed, operated, maintained, to provide safe access for all users. And, you know, we focus a lot on pedestrian and bicycle users, but generally when we talk about complete streets, they generally prove to be safer for automobile users as well. Crashes tend to go down in areas where complete streets policies have been implemented. They've been effective sort of safety measures, not just for, again, for people walking and biking, but also for people driving. They're not a sort of one-size, they're not a ones or a special street project. You can take it downtown and sort of make it more bikeable and walkable, but if you can't get to that downtown biking or walking, it's gonna be a lot less safe. If those corridors into your downtown aren't safe, then it's hard to, hard to make the whole area safe. So we try to focus it not so much on one specific project, but having a policy that city or county government, state governments can, can really vet through all the different, whether it's transportation or zoning, planning and zoning, different boards and different departments, you can really look at making sort of comprehensively a whole area safer. Again, it's not an immediate retrofit. It's not a stone-to-bullet. Obviously, there's a lot of other issues. There's going to be transportation, land use, environmental concerns, stolen water. There's a lot of different factors that go into play here, but, but those can come, basically, can use complete streets policies to, to work with other departments to make, basically, make an area more, you know, better for bikers and walkers. And it's not a mandate for immediate retrofit. It's not like we're saying, when you pass a complete streets policy in a city like Tifton, you go and blow up every single street and, you know, it changed the curb to curb. That's obviously, that costs a lot of money. No one's gonna do that automatically, right? So it's, it's over time. You build it into what you're doing. Your, your road, you know, you're repaving or rebuilding a road or reconstruction. You're working with GDOT on their state roads as well in your areas to make it better for, for people biking and walking. So again, the designs, again, you know, results are, are streets that are sort of really for everybody, not just, not just people in cars, but also people biking and walking. They don't conform to sort of one specific design, so it varies by context. A truck route is gonna look really different than an urban, sort of a downtown area versus a rural corridor. And then typically exceeds minimum standards. So if, if a bike lane, it says it can be three and a half feet, really, if it's a complete streets or a policy in a project, you like it to be a little bit wider, a little bit bigger, so that it really goes beyond just what's allowed. So we talk about, you know, safety of all users, context-sensitive, affordable, if done within curb-to-curb, obviously, incremental over time, and beneficial for people in the community. Again, it's not sort of one-size, it's all policy. It's not an unfunded mandate. It's not necessarily difficult to do. A lot of the, sort of, bike and pedestrian, you know, design is, is pretty common now within what people in transportation public works are doing. So it's not, this isn't something that's completely out of the realm of what most transportation engineers are now doing. So why do we need them? A lot of roads in communities sort of look like this, and it's, it's really hard to imagine trying to get, if you're trying to get down the road to get something to eat, or maybe go towards the downtown, or towards a trail, or a park, or a school, trying to bike and walk that, that kind of corridor is gonna be very difficult. There's a lot of, a lot of research done around traffic safety, crashes with pedestrians and cyclists. These are the areas throughout the state that have elevated and sort of highest level of concern. With the UGA Traffic Safety Research Group, Tifton County has elevated concern. I don't think it's particularly the highest concern. It tends to be, it's a lower-density area in the state. But there is still elevated level of concern in this area. So, you know, another reason why we talk about complete streets is quality of life. Sort of increasing quality of life mainly in downtown areas, but also corridors going into downtown areas and neighborhoods, outside of downtown areas that want to be more bikeable and walkable. What we know from a lot of economic impact studies throughout the country and throughout Georgia is that customers who walk and bike to places they visit more frequently, they spend more over time, they may spend less on a certain trip, but they're more likely to, to make repeat trips. They save on parking in downtown areas, and again, they convey a sense of vibrancy. People biking and walking downtown, not just walking in and out of their cars, again, you get a sense that people are, are sort of around downtown and spending time down there, not just sort of going from one place to the other by car. We need places where physical activity is an easy choice. Obesity rates by state, Georgia's pretty high up there and needs a lot of, one way of dealing with that is having a built environment that allows for people to bike and walk and bike for exercise, but also sort of use walking and biking as both exercise and maybe a way to get your kids to school, or walking or biking to the store, walking or biking to a downtown for dinner, something like that. So if you can sort of, pardon the phrase, kill two birds with one stone, you know, getting physical activity while also meeting a day-to-day need. It makes, if you make that an easy choice, there's a lot of benefit to that. One-third of adult Georgians are obese, and then those numbers have been going up, not down, the last decade or two. There's been a lot of trends in children particularly, as their rate of walking and biking to schools and their sort of tendency to be overweight. It's, it's, you know, the graph sort of shows, shows that. Children, a lot of schools in Georgia who can't even walk or bike to, the only way you can get to it is either driving or taking a bus. And it's a challenge to try to get safe routes for kids to be able to walk and bike to school. Obviously, there's other safety concerns as well, but certainly trying to have that in, you know, in a city or county is a big priority. We're teaming up with an organization called Mission Readiness, which is retired generals for all branches of the military who are looking at the issue of young people signing from military who are not physically fit. So seventy-three percent of Georgians who sign up age of seventy to twenty-four for, for, you know, basic service are not fit, physically fit according to the military of all branches. So we're gonna start working with them more, particularly in communities where there are bases, and there are military communities. But throughout the state of Georgia, it's, it's, it's an issue, for sure. Tourism, it was really hard for me to see that as I walked in. The tour of Tifton sign was right there as I walked in, and I know that, that has, you know, tourism, bike tourism has resonates here. And again, this is another way, if you create, you know, safe places for biking and walking, sorry, if you create, save places for biking and walking, people will come and spend money in your community, whether it's regional or statewide. We've seen that basically in every corner of the community, whether it's along the coast, south, north, all kinds of biking. You know, more sort of leisurely biking to more recreational and sport, sort of sports cycling. I think tourism is, is a big business for cycling in the state. So obviously, there's different contexts for complete streets. Sort of an urban context, a more suburban context, a more rural context. It really looks different no matter where you are. Complete streets are popular. We've done polling, are really our first polling we've ever done throughout the state. We targeted the five biggest cities in the state that are not Atlanta, Athens, Augusta, Columbus, Macon, and Savannah. And again, overwhelmingly support for complete streets policies. Not a lot of name recognition, not many people know what they are, but once we explain to them, you know, their policies that help your community make it safer for people to bike and walk places, more infrastructure, more sidewalks, more crosswalks, more bike lanes, more paths, people say, oh, no, I want that. That's, that's great. There's a strong support for investing in safety improvements. Again, it's not just about supporting, it's about spending money. And so we asked a question about, you know, spending a small portion of your city or county's transportation budget on these issue, on, on complete streets-type projects. And again, people responded, yes. We weren't saying fifty percent, we weren't saying seventy-five percent. We were saying a small, you know, a few percentage of, of your transportation budget. People were saying, yes, that's something we can do. Complete streets design, this is in downtown Macon along Second Street. It can look many different ways and many different places, but sort of back-end car parking, bike lanes. This is very important sort of statistic. You know, there's a high percentage of people that are interested in, in biking and walking that are maybe concerned. There are a small percentage of people that are gonna bike and walk no matter what. This is particularly looking at cycling. But there's certain people that are just gonna do it no matter what. They're fearless, they're confident. But there's a very large percentage of the population that says, I'm interested in this, but I'm concerned around safety, whether it's your safety or children's safety. Some people, it's never gonna happen, and that's okay. We're not trying to convert them to do something they don't want to do. But what we're trying is meet the need of that, you know, could be thirty, forty, fifty percent of a community that wants to bike, wants to walk somewhere but can't because of safety concerns. These are just some of the treatments you can see around complete streets. Some of these are pulled from Atlanta, some from other cities. Little bit of green paint, a little bit of striking, it can go a long way. The general idea of a policy is that it sets a vision, allows for all users of road, has exceptions, but requires sort of high-level approval for that, promotes connected networks, connecting to trails and parks, schools, the kind of community institutions that people generally want to walk and bike to, downtowns, et cetera. Applying to all road, roads and projects, obviously, new construction, reconstruction, resurfacing are very easy ways to start that. Using best-practice design, context-sensitive design, again, what works in Tifton and Tifton County is not gonna work in Macon. It's not the same thing that works in Atlanta. Things look different in different places, so having that context-sensitive design. Having performance measures, seeing if people are using, you know, seeing how, how to measure whether it works or not, and having an implementation plan. So one way to do is demonstration projects. You can use small planters, even, you know, very expensive three-dollar ones to create bike lanes, to create places to walk and bike for strollers in downtown areas to get a sense of, if people like, you know, like what they see and like what they feel. So there's ways of doing this. It doesn't cost a lot of money off, off the bat. Numerous levels of funding. There's state funding for surfacing, element funding for specific projects. There's local funding, and I know, you know, capital budget, obviously, resurfacing for city and county, SPOS funding, and then T-SPOS as well, depending on where, you know, where city and county is on those, on those funding. We talk about just a little paint can go a long way. This is a road before and after. Again, a lot of this is dependent on what the automotive daily traffic is and what kind of backups you're looking, but we really talk about trying to create twenty-four-hour streets that people can use all the time. There are obviously, there are peak hours on certain streets where traffic is super high, but twenty-three hours a day, if the road sits empty and used, on you, you know, less used like that, you know, put some paint down to create a crosswalk, to create a connection to your downtown, to create a bike lane, I can go a long way. And again, just a little bit of green paint can kind of change the way a corridor looks. It can make it more inviting for, for people biking and walking and make it safer for all users. So that's my contact information. Feel free to take questions afterwards and meet with y'all, depending on time. Thank you very much.
Elliot, have you met the, our main street director, Lacretia Gaskins? Lacretia just walked in. Have, have y'all?
I have not met, but I will talk, well, I'll talk later after. That's my brother, of course.
All right. Lacretia, he was just making a presentation about the complete streets and the biking and everything, and so Lacretia would be an excellent contact for our downtown since she's, she handles our main street program. And have you also, there's another group called TAGA, which is Tifton Area Greenways Association. It's a volunteer group. Have you made a connection with them?
So Sharon is on my board. I'm relatively new with Georgia Bikes as of the last few months, so my boss, Brent Bikes, who's based out of Savannah, knows Sharon very well and is capable of her. So we are connected together.
Excellent. Okay, 'cause they're working on some really interesting projects around the community, so.
And one of, one of the main things that a lot of places throughout the state that are working on greenways are using complete streets mainly as a way to be able to connect neighborhoods and people to those greenways. You could have a very successful, a very sort of in-demand greenway, and you've gotta build a ton of parking or a bunch of trailheads. But if you build connections through neighborhoods, sort of using low, low-density, low-traffic streets on, you know, connecting onto greenways, you can really do a lot for an area.
Is there anything within DOT, like when there's DOT funding that's for a specific project? Is there anything within DOT that's allocated for specifically creating these type of?
Well, so George, GDOT, I haven't even mentioned this. GDOT has a complete streets policy that, that really covers all of their, every single one of their projects. So a lot of it comes down to working with the district engineer, 'cause all the, you know, the plans for projects generally flow through them. They're not necess, they're supposed to do their plans, look to see what the need is, and sort of what the, what the desire is. The GDOT has a pedestrian bicycle coordinator, and she, we work with her really closely on making sure that when a new plan comes up, if there's, for instance, in Athens, there's a, they're redoing the connection of Lexington Road and the Loop, which is right near UGA. And there's our Firefly Trail, which is a railroad trail that's connecting with a greenway, and we're, there's an intersection to redoing right there. So we're talking to her about making sure that this district engineer knows
Right.
there's gonna be a lot of cross-traffic of people biking and walking.
Sure.
So she's actually meeting with them on Wednesday with our county manager and our head of transportation. So she sort of acts as a, she works with us and other advocates to make sure that the plans are sort of good for everybody.
Sure. Did anyone have any questions or comments or ideas? Okay. Thank you for those. Great presentation. Thank you very much. Very informative. And meet Lacretia. Meet with Lacretia. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes. We've had several meetings. We have July seventh, a special call meeting, July the eleventh, July fourteenth, and July twenty-first, and those were all sent out in our council packets. If anyone would like to make a motion to approve those, or if there are any changes or comments on the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do you want to approve all of those at one time, Johnny?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. Let everybody take a second to open up your council documents here. Our next item, item number five, is a resolution amending personnel policies and procedures with respect to rehired pensioner. And that's going to be Hunter Walker. He's going to present that.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, the, this was an item presented by Ms. Cooper at the workshop. It's, it just allows, it changes the policy to allow the city to hire retired pensioners full-time based on a, on a ninety-day service period that's, that's required, I believe, it's at IRS. It just gives the option. I know there was some concern about opening it up, but quite frankly, I don't know that it would happen all that much. An example, a good example of, of where it would be in use would be Officer Porter Jackson, who's retired from the police and is doing the, the parking enforcement. It really is beneficial to, to have a certified law enforcement officer that can do that, whereas his chief would probably not assign, given his struggle with manpower, I wouldn't think he would assign a full-time officer to do parking. That's just, that's an example. Ms. Fran Kitchen's position at the, senior citizen is another, just where you, you need somebody that's a, that, that's out in the community and would be an asset. Sometimes it's people with specialized knowledge, whether that would be in your finance department or whatever. It just gives you the opportunity, or as Mr. Will Martin pointed out at workshop, just the option.
Sure. Any questions on that? I know there were a couple of questions.
Yeah, I guess I'm still just, just concerned, and it just, as a matter of policy, I just don't like it. I just, to retire and then come back and be working full-time, just, I'm just not a proponent of that, so.
So someone could retire and ninety days later theoretically could be rehired, so they're getting a pension, but they could also be working full-time too. Is that right?
Currently, your current policy allows you to do it, but it, it mandates that it would be
On part-time.
Half-time, you know, part-time. It would be what, a thousand forty hours as opposed to two thousand eighty in a full work week.
And then they would be qualified for insurance and retirement.
Yeah, over thirty hours qualifies you for your insurance.
Part-time, I, I like, part-time's okay, actually.
Has this been an issue in the past? I mean, I'm kind of wondering why we need to change it now. I mean, has it, has it been an issue?
I can only accept that is, is.
Porter actually does work more than a thousand forty hours. He is not full-time, but he does work more than a thousand forty hours. So we need to somehow work it, we keep him just under the thirty-hour a week threshold for insurance.
Wait a minute, if the policy says he can only work a thousand forty, why is he working more?
Rob, from a, from a legal standpoint, you know, we've had employees who have worked in part-time capacity, who have worked over and above, would, what, like, I guess what I'm asking is what legal ramifications could we have by implementing something now when those folks no longer work with the city? And they've worked over their thirty hours. I mean, there has been issues of that, after.
You said, I'm sorry, Wes.
Any legal ramifications behind, from people who have done, that worked in the past, who maybe were working, were supposed to work part-time, but maybe worked over their hours? Could they, is there any legal ramification behind that?
If we, if we now adopt this, no.
Now that we adopted, you're right. And we're getting.
Yeah. And this is prospective only.
Okay.
Did you want to say any other questions about this?
If, did a part-time position?
They can be full-time.
No, they're gonna be full-time.
It, it, it just allows the possibility that they could be full-time. It doesn't require that they're full-time to practice. The practice is, just to follow the policy, wouldn't be convenient, yeah, and, and, uh, I, I just think that, that it just gives you the option, or gives them the option to, to do that. You know, I don't think anybody's gonna jump off a bridge if it doesn't pass. I just, I, I think it just is, 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 is an option to use. It's another, it's another arrow in the quote.
Okay.
And what, what Hunter's saying is true. I mean, you may, you don't know what the future's gonna hold, and you may have somebody who's very qualified. They might have been retired for a period of time and they want to come back to work. And then you would have that option to hire them.
If we wanted to, or, or to hire them either full-time or part-time, is what you're saying. They don't have to be full-time.
We can do it part-time now.
Yeah, but we're adding the full-time, yeah.
In fact, you're compelled to only do it part-time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, what I'm saying is it doesn't remove that part-time aspect of it.
It unties your hands any that you decide that you'd like to hire.
And their, and their, their years of service will continue. So let's say I retired, was it twenty-five or fifty-five, and, you know, ninety days later, I come back and work another ten years. That would be thirty-five years of service.
Or does it start over?
It would, it would add on years of service to retirement. However, you've got to remember that if they're hired now, they're putting in five percent contribution.
Right.
And so it's gonna take, I think, buddy, I think it would have to take four years for them to actually get into the black as far as retirement goes.
Any other questions or comments?
If we're paying on the pension, we're paying in retirement, do they go come back and put a pension for hours? That's kind of dog-dip.
Yep.
And it continues on with the pension.
Yeah, the pension would increase because they would have years of service.
The one difference that, that I have noticed in Florida is that you don't, in other words, if, if you do ever come, if you come back, you have to revest. They have the option to, to, you would have to revest,
Revest.
which would be, I think, ten years. But again, they can often do that in benefits to the, to the four hundred and one K contribution. Then, and then, and then you're putting in.
Let me ask a question of Hunter and Carla and Rob. We are, I know that it's, you've wanted to sort of explore some other avenues with regard. Would it be better to table this particular item to, to be a part of that exploration and discussion and take care of it all at once? Or is this totally separate and would be, need to be taken care of now?
You're talking about the retirement issue that you was talking about? I think it's separate issues.
Okay, so, okay, all right. I didn't know that.
There is some.
Are there any other cities?
I didn't, there's some connection there.
Is there any other sample that we're going by, or we just?
Then I don't know.
What was that question, Wes? I didn't.
I was just asking if there was any other cities that maybe have a policy similar to the one that was presented.
I did check my own. There are some. I can't off the top of my head. I can't remember which one. Sorry, I'm not as prepared tonight, but I did check. And the majority of them do say that it's because, do say that they can only come back part-time, but it's because their retirement plan only allows part-time. Our retirement plan does not restrict us.
How many times, I mean, I know we mentioned Porter. Do we have a lot of folks?
Well, and Benny just said that Porter, because of POAB, actually, cannot work. So, and I apologize for that. I thought, I know when I told you in time, I see usually around twenty-five, twenty-eight, but then I guess some months he doesn't work as much, so I was just formed by past memory. Um, we have, as I read the report, we gave Judy, Judy Normany.
Uh-huh.
You know, she came up and worked. She may not have worked a thousand forty because it was a short period of time, but that's, that would be a good example. Judy left under early retirement initiative plan, incentive plan, excuse me, and retired at like fifty-one or fifty-two.
Right.
And so, you know, that's still young with a lot of knowledge
Yeah.
that we needed her for, for a certain period of time.
Does your department, when somebody goes and, and they get early retirement, do you go through the, the pros and cons, so to speak? If, so listen, you know, you're sixty-five, your Medicare does not kick in, you know. Of course, I know that most of these retirees did it before Obamacare came in, so I know that there's gonna be a difference in, in health premiums and, and, from then to now, but I'm saying, do, does our human resources department, do they, do they go over that with their early retirement?
We talked about all of that, yes, and, and I mean, that is, that's a big decision for them because they are allowed to keep our healthcare. them because they are allowed to keep our healthcare, but they pay the full premium, which is pretty substantial, but they are allowed to keep our healthcare. I think the cheapest is probably six hundred fifty dollars a month.
So we've had somebody that took early retirement, and then we hire them back. I mean, isn't that kind of going against?
I think, I think there was some period of time, I mean, I think
Why would we? I'm not sure why.
Well, I think
I think it's a period of need.
Yeah.
Again, I think that
But it beats the purpose of early retirement. Isn't early retirement to reduce your headcount? That doesn't mean you bring it back.
Again, early retirement You create another position from there, you have an opening subsequent, and then, and then I guess you'd have to trade out what the salary was gonna be.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Questions, comments? All right, if someone would like to make a motion to either approve or not approve amending the personnel policies.
Evidently, there's no motion.
There's no motion. Okay, so that dies for lack of a motion. Item number six is our commercial ground lease with the Tifton Terminal Railway Museum. Mr. Willmott?
Mayor and Councilors, it was brought to my attention, there was an issue downtown with the parking area there south of the Tifton Terminal Railway Museum. Basically, that's private property that's being leased from the DDA to the Tifton Terminal Railway Museum. In order for us to enforce our parking ordinance, now see, it has to be our property. So in order to enforce our parking ordinance down there, the Tifton Terminal Railway Museum has agreed to lease to the city for a dollar a year this section, as you can see it on the lease in yellow. We've agreed, they want to keep three parking spaces, they're closest to the caboose, that's right where they load stuff. So basically, what you have is a ground lease, it'll go till 2020, which is basically the lease term for the railway museum. And then we'll have three spots there in pink. We've agreed to provide signage for those three spots, reserving those to the museum. And then of course, then the rest will be city parking, which our regular parking ordinance will apply. So basically, this is just an agreement with them for, to give us, for a dollar a year, this parking area, so we can utilize the public parking, enforce our parking ordinance.
Right, okay. Any questions, comments to try to understand?
All right, so for a dollar a year, now what now? I'm sorry.
The lease is a dollar a year for us to lease this parking area from the museum.
Is that a city?
No, the property belongs, is privately, is owned by the Downtown Development Authority, and that, including the street that goes beyond the railway museum. So you know where the pavers are that go out onto Third Street? Okay, that is all, from that, basically, that crosswalk down to Third Street is owned by the Downtown Development Authority. And it was part of this private lease with the railway museum. So what was happening, based on some of the comments from some of the downtown businesses, was because people found out that strip of parking could not be enforced with our downtown parking ordinance, several of the business employees were parking there and taking that space up along that First Street extension, rather than parking in the public parking areas where they're supposed to park. So this would allow, by leasing it, it puts it under our control, so that we can then enforce that with the exception of the three spots that they wanted to continue to keep as private parking. So it just allows Porter to be able to enforce parking in that area, which would keep it open for customers and, and, you know, folks who are coming downtown to eat or shop or whatever they're coming downtown for, versus it being tied up with businesses using it.
Just as a caveat to that, we anticipate that the same issue may come up on the north side once Brumby Way improvements have been made. And so very well may look at something similar to what we're doing on the south side when Brumby Way's through, provide for, again, more public parking and enforcement.
Can we go ahead and do that at one time? While, just
Well, I thought we'd go ahead and take care of this, and then, because I don't know what Brumby Way's gonna look like, so I thought
Yeah, there's gonna be some pretty significant changes. We talked about possibly doing it all together, but there, there's some significant changes, and they've already basically agreed that, yeah, we'll work with you on that side as well, let's see what that plan comes out to be, and then we can address it at the time that we need to address it. Right now, there's nothing to enforce on that side, so, because that is designated as, you know, kind of public parking, but there's no way to really enforce that on that side either, because it's wrapped up in the lease from the Tifton Terminal Railway Museum.
And in the event we deal with the north side, we can just do a little amendment to this, this case.
And that's all this, is just an amendment to their lease, which gives the city then the authority to enforce that parking in that area. And this has come from, at the request of some of the businesses in that area, so that they can use that for their customer parking. Any questions?
No, I move that we go ahead and accept the amendment and lease that space for a dollar a year.
Okay, we have a motion, or second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. That is unanimous. And other business, Hunter, you're gonna talk about the Behavioral Health Services of South Georgia agreement?
Yes, and this is the annual agreement with Behavioral Health Services of South Georgia, and they provide your employee assistance program and half our number of years, and this is, it's, it's a approval of the agreement, no change.
Okay. And that, that agreement is in our packet, and Carla talked about that at our last, at the workshop. So at this point, I'll call for a motion to approve that.
I'll still move.
So we have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Thank you, Johnny. There's a motion, second. Any further discussion or any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is also unanimous. Our next item is our board report. Jessica?
I did receive another application, I wanted to bring it today, it was for Bobby Fresh. She's interested in the HPC. Y'all familiar with her?
Who's Bobby Fresh?
Mm-hmm. Twenty-six, she lives at twenty-six fourteen Hall. And Kristy, Kristy Daniels, she also submitted for the Public Library Board. We do have a vacancy there from Erica Johnson. And the HPC also has an available spot because of the resignation of Ms. Marks and Middleton. And then we also received recently a resignation from Ms. Elaine Cook from the Keep Tipton Beautiful Board. So there are three vacant positions, and right now we have two applications that could buy, you know.
So Ms. Kristy Daniels is Keep Tipton Beautiful?
No, she's the Library Board.
Oh, library.
Yeah.
And then Ms. Bobby Fresh is HPC?
Carter, was Jeff Robbins going to apply for HPC? Didn't he tell you that he was gonna, he told me he was. Did he tell you he was? Do you remember, Carter? Did Jeff Dan, I mean, Jeff Robbins tell you that he was going to apply for the HPC?
Yes, he did.
He told me too, and we haven't gotten his application in. I know he was real excited about applying for that, and I don't
I would remind him of that.
Okay, if you don't mind doing that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. We just have one opening on the Library Board? Is that right right now? Okay. And I made a mistake, Carter, I owe you an apology, when I was swearing you, and I said planning and zoning, it was actually Tifton Zoning Board of Appeals, so I apologize about that. I had planning and zoning on my mind, so make sure you're on the right board that you want to be on. Does anybody want to make any
Osprey Circle in the
That's in Wes's district.
Yes, yes, Cypress Ridge. I'd like to make a motion to put Kristy Daniels on the Library Board.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll say.
And there's a second? We have a motion, second? Any further discussion about Ms. Daniels or this position? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
She looks like she'll be a very good board member, she's got an impressive resume.
How many positions on the HPC? Just one?
Just the one.
Just one left.
And then two on Keep Tipton Beautiful, is that correct?
As far as I know, there's just one.
Just the one, okay. Okay. And there was a, a very nice woman that I met with recently, who has expressed some interest in serving on Keep Tipton Beautiful. She had some issues with some neighborhood complaint with some properties, and seemed very interested, so Jessica's gonna be in contact with her about Keep Tipton Beautiful to see if she might go ahead and submit an application for that, so. All right, any other questions or comments discussing our board report? And Jessica skipped the changing of the date of the September meeting, so we'll go back to number eight.
Um, what I suggest when you look at the date, our next, the September council meeting is on Labor Day, and looking at the calendar, it would be best to move it back a week because of, if we moved it up a week, it'd be the same week as our workshop.
Sure.
So we're proposing Monday, August twenty-ninth. If y'all just look at y'all's calendar, if that works for you all. Or we could do it, well, we can't do it the Tuesday after because that's HPC.
August twenty-ninth.
Yeah, Monday, August twenty-ninth. Does that work for you, Johnny? Is that prime? Does that tell you okay?
Yeah.
August twenty-ninth. So we'll move it back a week, so we'll just make a week or night.
Very four weeks from tomorrow.
Because there's five, there's five in a day, so it's
That might seem a month.
Okay.
September meeting to August
Twenty-ninth.
We have the September meeting tomorrow.
Twenty-ninth.
Say that again?
Moving to September's meeting, I'm just trying to
Yeah.
You confused us.
Will you send us one of those reminders to our call?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
This is where I did, I wanted to make sure that y'all
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead. We don't need a vote on that, do we? Rob, just, just approval, okay.
Okay.
All right, so let's move to August twenty-ninth at five-thirty.
Jessica, can you, speaking of sending reminders, can you send me one on the workshop? Whatever reason, I've lost the workshop.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so workshop is August eighteenth. Council meeting will be August the twenty-ninth, and then the September workshop will be back on schedule. Okay? All right, the next item on our agenda is our city manager report. Take it away.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'll be brief. Is, is, I've been on the job two weeks, I think Ms. Moore will be glad if she lives long enough that I can manage the GIMs system as far as getting recreation, requisition approved. She says there's great hope, but I've just about lost all hope that I'll ever master.
Is that all, old doggy break the same
I'm saying, but anyway, on city personnel issues is Karen Sanders is here, and she's our annual finance director, since Ms. Love resigned and vacated the office. So effective last Monday, Ms. Sanders began, and we're moving forward to start interviewing finance director position, the finance director position, see where that goes. The position profile is being updated for the Tifton City Manager position. I believe that, I hope that the August eighteenth workshop to kind of have a discussion item with you on, show you the brochure, maybe give you a timeline of when you, you know, how you want to move forward with, with, during the recruitment. I think that Ms. Cooper is comfortable, I'm certainly comfortable, that we could handle that in-house, but there's always the option that if you wanted to advertise for a recruiter, you could do that there, ten to twelve to fifteen thousand dollars depending on the level of effort. So that's moving forward. And is the, Mayor and Council know that you've been working, I believe, really since the first of the year on some type of revenue replacement for the fire department? And so we're, we're getting up to speed today. I'm getting up to speed on that, and then with the consultant today and, and Ms. Jones, and trying to understand that. So, you know, at some point, we've got about an eight hundred thousand dollar hole in the budget, we're looking at the fire protection fee, which would, as you know, would benefit all the structures, they would benefit from the service. So anyway, I hope to have that ready at the August eighteenth, at least the discussion to move forward, what decisions need to be made, and how to move forward kind of with a, a public education plan, just that type of thing. So Jessica had mentioned that you had done that in retreats previously, I didn't know if you wanted to schedule that or just to have it on the workshop, and then whatever action you would take, you'd be, you'd be positioned to be in a position to take action at the, what now would be the August twenty-ninth meeting. So just give that some consideration. We have, at least working with the county, we've, we've at least successfully allocated the distribution of the SPOSS five funds for spite, for power services when we split that up, and so that's been accomplished. We still need to agree on the division of the assets, but we're, we're getting on that. The county administrator was out of his office last week, so we'll, we'll work on that this coming week. Also, I guess the biggest thing, and a couple of big things in the city-county issue department is the tipping fee. I sent you the email that while the city council had approved that fee increase, the county had not. The integral agreement anticipates that the coordinating committee may make a recommendation and both boards would approve that. So we're working with the county staff, or we'll be working with county staff, make sure that we could, they can understand what our, our issues are, and they've got some concerns with, with how we're there, and so we're, we're meeting as a staff to be sure we understand that, and to be able to sit there with their staff, and then ultimately the board commissioners, because they'll have to approve, and we'll move forward and we'll work, we will be working, we being, Ms. Willmott and I will be working on, in this topic, any issues that come up because of the on, on, on for a month, off for a month, and we think those can be resolved. We're gonna try to get that done as quickly as possible. Again, that impacts budgets, budget started July one, and we're aware of that. We still got to resolve the utility cut issue. At the July twenty-first workshop, there was concern expressed about the county fire rescue running, the extrication calls within the city, the mayor who sent a letter, I believe it was June thirtieth, right, you know, before going into the calendar here, advising the county commission chair and all involved, that we, the city would be responsible for those services. The county attorney still continues to run, run those. As we've discussed, that there can be anywhere from four to six emergency vehicles there, excluding law enforcement, so.
Well, here's, here's my question, would that be an executive session that we would need to discuss remedies on that?
If, if Hunter is, if Hunter's gonna be talking with Jim Carter about that issue and see if that can be resolved, then I think, is that what you were thinking about?
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure that I think it can be resolved. I mean, the point of fact is, you asked me, he's been out of the office, and he, he's busy with his meeting tomorrow, and we just didn't get together today, but I can talk to him. But that means we're gonna be, we're gonna be at a workshop the eighteenth, we're, we're two and a half weeks away from that. I don't know what specific other action we could take, we could
Well, if you, you know, if, we would need a public one, an executive session.
Can that be added to the agenda today, or do we need, I mean, can we go into an executive session?
If it's, this is an issue that's come up during the meeting, we can, so we can add an executive session to the agenda.
Okay, let's do that.
Let's do that.
Let's do that, okay. All right. All right, what else you got, Hunter? Anything else?
Oh, no, just a couple, you saw the issues on the Brumby Way improvements, and then the streets gate, we'll be working with that, especially with La Creche on, some of the issues with the Brumby Way coming up in the alley that runs from Third to Fifth, so, no, that's, that's all.
I might, I appreciate the city manager report.
Absolutely.
It was very enlightening, and in addition to that, the ESG report that you sent was quite surprising and informative, and glad that we got to see
It was very enlightening, and additionally, that the E S G report that you sent was quite surprising and informative, and glad that we got to see it.
All in a good way.
It was very.
All positive.
All very positive, yeah. One thing I would like to ask, um, if it would be possible doing, Karen, this, this may be, um, you may need to chime in on this. Would it be possible to get, uh, some type of a financial report that would sort of mirror the city manager reports, or where we are on budget, if there's, you know, just, just kind of, um, it doesn't have to be in any great detail or depth, but just sort of a good talking overview. I think that would be helpful to all of us, um, just to have that monthly, maybe as part of the, even could be part of the city manager's report, so we can sort of see where we are, if you don't mind, that'd be good. Okay? But yes, Hunter, we, that report is outstanding, so thank you for that. Thank you very much. All right, I believe that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda items, with the exception of going into executive session. So at this point in time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion.
What's the motion?
Uh, the motion is for legal, or, uh, executive session for legal matters.
Okay. Thank you.
Our, our journalists over there.
Listen, I appreciate it, that's good, all right, so a motion?
I second that motion, I leave it whatever it elements.
Is there a motion, a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, well, we need to, um, contact Latasha, will there be anything, I guess we'll need to, okay. Latasha, I don't think we'll have anything necessarily to report, so. Thank everybody for coming, Carter, thank you for your service, we appreciate it, don't forget to talk to Jeff.